Calling to order the Monday, October 22nd, 2018, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Councilmember Blanchard.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following amendment. Change number seven, closed session to appointments to boards and commissions, and make closed session number eight.
Okay. Is there a second?
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Henin. Any additions, corrections? See you over here? No? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Reverend Tal Sullivan.
Let's pray. God, we give you thanks for your love, which has been poured out for every person in our city. We're thankful, God, that we are a city that's motivated by love and that our love for each other helps us to be civil and to be respectful with each other. God, we thank you for the example in our leadership. We thank you for that example in our city employees and, God, for our area businesses and our residents. We ask, God, that you would continue to bless our city and make it a place where your love is obvious. We pray for wisdom for our leaders. We pray that they would trust you the way that they want for us to trust them. And we pray now that you would bless this city council meeting, give wisdom and strength. And I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
My pleasure, Regent.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now reached citizens' comments. When you may present your thoughts on issues not included on tonight's agenda, council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay. Seeing nobody coming to the microphone, we will move on to our order of business. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, October 8, 2018. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1331. And motion number M 7618, matter of approving the downtown development authority DDA bylaws.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Stedman with support by Councilmember Henin. Any additions or corrections?
I think yes. On the minutes, it says present, and it lists everyone that says present, and it says Steve Baker. Should that say not present, or?
Not present. To reflect the minutes, it is in the separate section, but it says the same thing. Got that?
Yes.
Clerk, we good? Okay. Thank you. Any other additions or corrections? Seeing no additional, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. Thank you for that correction. Move on to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to agenda item number two.
Resolution number R 3218, matter of designating Saturday, December 1st, 2018, for the annual holiday parade and tree lighting ceremony in Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R 3218?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's time to start thinking festive again. The annual holiday lights parade is coming back up. It is going to be another wonderful year, festive event. The same group was in charge of it. In fact, we're joined by Ms. Cindy Kuhn, who's here, who is our president of the committee this year. It's going to be December 1st. It's going to happen on, coming right down 12 Mile, as it always does, culminating in a stop at the gazebo, where a certain special visitor will be lighting the Christmas tree again and giving some warm words before talking to all the children. So you have a couple of items included in your packet, and in addition to that, you've got a treasures report that was included in your place setting today. So they have fulfilled the requirements needed for all the reviews on this.
Good evening, Cindy.
Good evening.
Anything else that's?
Well, first, I would like to invite all of you to attend and participate in our annual tree lighting and our holiday parade. Two separate committees run this. I wear two separate hats in this. If I can say one thing and just put it out there, we need help. We desperately need help. I hate to say that this might be the last year, but this might be the last year. Three people are running this committee, and I have, right now, no one, no one to run security lining up that parade. So if you know anybody, any retired police officers, anything like that, we need city involvement huge. We really do. And it's a lot of fun. Everybody wants to enjoy it. Everybody wants to watch it. But we need help. We need help desperately. But it's going to go on. We already have entries. We have the day planned. I wish our DDA would get on board with us, but that has not happened. We are planning a warming station at Griffith and 12 Mile, where there will be smores, a smore station and warming station, and we have our petting zoo, which will be at Clark's Ice Cream, and things like that that will be going on. Several of our businesses will be participating and being sponsors in this. So we have DTE, who has said that they want to sponsor, which we love. We love DTE. It's a light parade, so we want them involved. And please show up.
How can people who want to volunteer get in touch? Where should they go? What should they do?
Actually, they can contact me, and I will throw my phone number out there. It's my cellphone, 248-219-7537, because, like I said, we desperately do need help. And it's not even that I need you sitting on the committee that we meet, and it's boring and everything else, but the day of the event and when things start revving up, like at 4:30 in the afternoon over there on Cummings and Bacon, I just need help. I need help back there. And we are planning a fundraiser at Patrick J's on Monday, November the 12th, I think that's the date, and it will be from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM. Please come out and enjoy a beverage or something to eat. And as you know, Bob is always very, very generous and donates a portion of the sales and stuff to that. And yes, so give me a call, and I would love to have you.
I have a question. So in addition to security, when you say you need help, it's helpful if people know exactly what your needs are so that they can go, oh, that's my skill set, or, oh, that's so. Is that somewhere that they can see, like, oh, do you have a wish list?
I do have a wish list, and, you know, we try to get a lot of the high school kids involved carrying banners and stuff like that, and our robotics team is awesome. They are absolutely awesome, and they always show up for us. I need adults.
Okay.
I need adults, because back on the side streets where we block off, because we have to keep all of these kids and people safe, so we have barricades that are put up, I need adults at those barricades that can say, hey, you can't go there. We need you to stop here, go down this way. And so I just need, and like I said, it's really basically from like 4:30 until the parade kicks off at 5:30, and after 5:30, your job's done, because as soon as we, as soon as that first vehicle goes out onto 12 Mile, your job is basically done.
And I have one more comment. With regard to the DDA, Vivian Carmody, our executive director, is here. I know you know one another.
Yes.
And I also was the vice chair of the DDA, so I know firsthand how much the DDA would love to be involved in this, and I know that we have been in the past. So perhaps the two of you could talk, or if you're going to stay for the meeting, I'd be happy to, you know, the three of us talk about how that can happen.
Yes. I can't stay, but yes, that would be great, and I would love it.
Good. Excellent.
Absolutely. We don't, we turn away no one.
Okay.
No one. So, yeah, and I know that our businesses want to be involved, and they have, in the past, served hot chocolate and cookies and goodies and stuff throughout the day because we try to really rev it up during the day, so.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great event.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I hate to, I would hate to see it go away. I've been sitting on this committee since the men's club turned it over to us, and I think we're at almost year 15 now, so, yeah, I would love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay. Everybody heard it. It's on TV. We want, we want Santa Claus to continue to visit the City of Berkeley, and we want to have the incredible parade that we have every year. We've talked about this at the end of every event. They don't happen without residents, without volunteers, and Cindy and the committee do a tremendous job, but we need some more boots on the ground. So let's try to find either a place we can have people sign up, so they're not just calling your cellphone all the time. Let's get something together. People can sign up, we'll tell them where to go, what the places they need to be, so that we can make sure that, one, you don't lose your mind on that day as well, and we continue to have this event. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 3218?
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 7718, matter of approving funding alternative. As the City of Berkeley, Michigan, funding alternative to be used in the corrective action plan in compliance with Public Act 202 of 2017.
Okay, so we are going to, whoever makes this motion, again, there's a blank space there for everybody else who's watching, we're going to make the motion. We'll receive a presentation after council discusses which of the alternatives we will go with. That will be filled in to this item, so it will read approve funding alternative, whatever council discusses and makes. I just want everyone to know that we're not just approving a blank item. There's a reason we're doing it this way. Now, with that, would somebody like to make that motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the introduction as well. Staff has prepared a presentation for city council to review. It does include, as the mayor mentioned, four funding alternatives that we have in order to fully pay out our other, our other post-employment benefits. OPEB is the acronym that you'll hear several times this evening, but that does refer to retiree healthcare, which is a benefit we have not offered since July 1, 2008, but we still have some obligations for those employees that previously qualified for it. And so this is a strategy for seeing that through until it's no longer a need for the city to fund anymore. So with that being said, I'll invite our finance director, who has prepared a presentation on this, and then it's related to the next-gen item as well.
So tonight, we're going to speak about Public Act 202 of 2017. This was legislation that was put in place December 2017. It was put in effect immediately, which left our treasury, the state treasury scrambling to implement it. It was, it's known as the Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefits Act. It's intended to reflect the 2017 July findings and recommendations from the Responsible Retirement Reform for Local Government Task Force. Realizing that local government is not one size fits all, the task force recommended an annual review of pension and retiree healthcare, otherwise known as OPEB, plans for each municipality. The state requested from each municipality information, and the source was the most recent audit report. And in particular for OPEB, they asked for either information from the footnotes or the required supplemental information. Well, later, the city discovered, or was notified by the state, that they requested or that they required the information from the 2017 CAFER supplemental information schedule, which was outdated information from 2012. And it indicated that the city's OPEB plan was only 8% funded. GASB 74 is a governmental accounting standards board act, or standard, that was put into place, which was required to start June 30th of 2017 for the city. We got kind of caught in between. We implemented 74. 75 is going into effect for the June 30th, 2018, which our auditors have in their hands right now. So what happened is the state wanted us to report off of this page here. I'm sorry, it didn't turn out very well for the big screen here, but you can see that it's showing that our actual value of our assets was only 2.2 million and that we were only 8% funded. The old method of reporting was that you would do an actuarial valuation every three years, and it would be good for the next coming three years. So you can see for actuarial valuation date, June 30th of 2012, it was good for the fiscal years ended '15, '16, and '17 for reporting purposes for accounting. In reality, as of June 30th, 2017, the city's OPEB plan was 17.71% funded, and as of June 30th, 2018, it was 19.78% funded. Still not great, but significantly better than the 8%.
Ginger, if I can add a supplemental, the city did perform an actuarial valuation in 2015 per the three-year schedule. It did not include an ARC, the annual required contribution, and that's why it wasn't reflected in that data. But the city by no means forgot or neglected to perform that study. It just didn't prefer, it didn't include one item, which is why it wasn't included in that chart there, so. But we did do the 2015 actuarial valuation.
Okay. So each municipality must provide data for each pension and OPEB plan, and all municipalities were required to submit by January 31st of 2018. Berkeley did indeed submit by that timeframe. The state reviews the data from municipalities to identify underfunded plans. Berkeley's audit information was reviewed, and the city was identified as underfunded only for OPEB, not for either of our pension plans. Municipalities can apply for a waiver describing implemented cost containment measures. The City of Berkeley chose, that was an optional item. We did choose to submit a waiver in March of 2018. If the waiver is not accepted, the administrative officer or the governing body must approve a corrective action plan to address underfunded status. Berkeley's waiver was not accepted, and notice was received in May of 2018. The corrective action plan is due mid-November of 2018, so we're right on schedule. Purpose of the corrective action plan is that it's a financial planning tool. It describes how the municipality will fund its retirement-related legacy costs. It helps to identify what is reasonable and affordable. It memorializes the approach for future administrations. It can be modified if change, if conditions change. It does not prohibit additional contributions when the budget allows.
One quick second, Ginger. So I just want to go back a second. We kind of glossed over it. You mentioned that we had to do this based on our OPEB, just our health, our healthcare, retiree healthcare, so not the retirement, or not our pensions that you mentioned.
Right.
So according to the state, what we have been doing for pensions does not put us in corrective action necessary state.
Right. We're going to get to some slides that show that.
I just wanted to be clear that it's healthcare that we're talking about.
Correct.
It's not that we're underfunded. There are many municipalities who are underfunded on the other sides of things.
Correct.
For us, it was strictly healthcare, OPEB stuff.
Yep. And we're going to see how other municipalities in the state compare to us in a couple of slides here. So bear with me. Corrective action plan approval criteria. So the City of Berkeley shall provide a graph showing funding growth over time. Be able to achieve plan results in a reasonable timeframe. For OPEB, it's 40% funded within 30 years. Submit a legal and feasible plan. It must comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws, and it must demonstrate plan affordability. State wants us to be able to continue our services as we have all along. They don't want this to be a burden. So affordability. Must be able to meet current and future obligations without using a significant portion of the budget. So less than 10% for pension and less than 12% for OPEB, the ARC, over governmental fund revenues. The ability to offer resident services while meeting those legacy obligations. Prefund OPEB to earn interest income and build savings for future payments, and follow best practices to reach affordability. So best practices for affordability, and you can see there's several asterisks off to the right, which shows that City of Berkeley has been pretty proactive in containing its costs. And the defined benefit plan is now closed to new hires, and it has been since 2008 for the majority of the, of the unions. Diversify the investment portfolio in consultation with MERS, the system provider. Enable proper assumptions are utilized according to actuarial standards of practice. And draw and trust asset as needed to meet future OPEB obligations. So state funding status based on the city's pension data. So this is pension, and this is the data that the state looked at for City of Berkeley. And what this is showing us is that our governmental fund revenues were 14 million. Our funding ratio, Plan 1, is our MERS plan, and it is, as of June 30th, 2017, it is 54.6% funded. The public safety pension system is 78.8% funded as of June 30th of 17. And it did not meet underfunded status, neither of these plans. You see that where it says no down at the bottom. So this was a very quick, easy way for the state to evaluate municipalities. This was presented at a couple of different conferences that I attended. We've modified it slightly by showing where the City of Berkeley falls in terms of the MERS plan. We are in that yellow 125, with other, 124 other plans. We're in that 50 to 60% range. The public safety pension is in the 194, the 60 to 70% funded range. Total, there's 878 plans across the state that were being evaluated for pension. So now to look at the OPEB data, again, you can see that governmental fund revenues, 14 million, 14.2 million. We are at 17.7%. Well, the funded ratio was 8%, but all plans combined ARC over governmental revenues was 17.7%. Underfunded status, yes. So this is where we triggered. And you can see that the state forced us to be in the 0 to 10% with the other 279, but Berkeley actual is within the 10 to 20% range. Statewide corrective action plans, as of October 9th, there's, they're expecting 196 plans to be submitted, and only 14 have been submitted to the state as of October 9th. So that's only 7%. So the reason that that's been happening is, I know for us, we've been seeing a lot of changes. Treasury admits that almost daily, they're out on their website modifying forms and information for the municipalities to be in compliance. I think as this goes on, they're gathering more data from municipalities, they're getting more feedback, and they are adjusting. So the corrective action plan, funding alternatives for Berkeley. So we contacted Louise Gates from Gabriel Roder Smith, and she has all of our data, and she ran four alternatives for us to take a look at tonight. So currently, the retiree healthcare benefits, or OPEB, is closed to new hires. We have $5 million in assets held in trust for retiree healthcare. These are invested assets that are not currently being used for paying our obligations, and it's sitting there, and it's being allowed to earn interest. The funds could be available to ensure affordability in future years. In past years, additional contributions in excess of pay-as-you-go amounts have been So this is the graph that the state really wanted to see from each municipality. And Louise had a meeting with Mr. Baumgart and myself and Lisa Manetta from Plant Moran, and we discussed a few different alternatives. And so she ran these four scenarios, and two of them are very similar. You can see Alternative 2 and 3 are fairly close. Let me get to, we'll kind of go through them one by one. So Alternative 1, we continue the payments for retiree healthcare with a maximum annual payment of 1.2 million. When the payment due exceeds 1.2 million, we would pay the difference using funds from trust assets. We would be at 40% funded by 2043, and 100% funded would be achieved by 2052. After 2052, no additional city contributions would be required. For Alternative 2, the red line on the graph, the city would pay 1.2 million per year through fiscal year 2043. In the near term, annual payments are expected, less than 1.2 million, just over 1 million. Additional excess annual contributions applied to trust assets, 40% funded by 2041 and 100% funded by 2050. After 2050, no additional city contributions would be required. Alternative 3, which is the green line, we would continue Alternative 3, which is the green line, we would continue to pay the benefits to a maximum of 1.1 million. We would pay an additional 200,000 per year during 2020 to 2023. We would reach 40% funded by fiscal year 2047, and reach 100% funded by fiscal year 2056. After 2056, no additional city contributions would be expected. Alternative 4 is similar to Option 3. So Alternative 4 is the purple line. It's much more aggressive. The cap would be at 1.2 million. Like Alternative 3, fund an additional 200,000 from 2020 to 2023. We would reach 40% funded by fiscal 2039, and reach 100% funded by fiscal 2049. After fiscal 2049, additional city contributions would not be required. So these are the different things that I just read off to you all. Recommendations and next steps. So in terms of recommendation, I, the city is in a pretty strong financial position. I think we could do any of these. However, Alternative 1 is a, where we would continue to pay as you go. And it meets the criteria for affordability. The current contribution is approximately $1 million, and we can maintain flexibility by increasing the contribution as the budget allows. The additional amount considered annually would be considered annually in each budget cycle. When annual pay-as-you-go amount is greater than 1.2 million, a portion of the trust assets can be used to cap the current year contribution. Again, that leads to the affordability aspect. It satisfies the state requirement of being 40% funded within 30 years. Berkeley would be 40% funded in 25 years and 100% funded in 34 years. With a closed plan, the retiree attrition will result in expedited achievement of the 100% funding level. That's why we saw it swoop up so rapidly at the end here. Corrective action plan next steps. Work with the actuary to establish funding alternatives. That's what we've done. Show graphically the funded level, that's what we've done. City council approves a course of action, that's what we're doing here tonight. It will then be reviewed by Michigan State Department of Treasury. They've committed to, by suggestion of Mr. Baumgarten, actually, to take a look at this and review it prior to it going to the municipal stability board. Then, after we get feedback from Treasury, we will do a formal submission of that document, assuming that everything is fine, to the stability, to municipal stability board. And if it's denied, we would repeat steps 1 through 4. If it's approved, we implement the plan. And submit future reports as required. Consider the feasibility of making additional contributions during annual budget preparation. Evaluate the effect of earnings on trust assets. Modify the plan as needed on an ongoing basis. And maintain accountability to the municipal stability board. Are there any questions?
Questions?
I have a couple. I know this is big, but because we haven't chosen which corrective action plan we're going to go with.
Right.
But the possibility of denial, I mean, I heard you list all these potential courses of action, and they're all, and I'm not an actuary, but they all seem pretty solid to me, but with varying degrees of how they're going to roll out. Has it been your experience that these get denied very often? I mean, I'm reading these four plans, and I'm thinking they all look good. They're different in different ways, but they're all meeting the needs of, you know, what the expectations are and where we're supposed to be, given what the state is telling us, what the actuaries have said, you know, they all seem solid.
Right. If we were to go back to that slide of the plans that have been submitted.
Yes.
Let me get back there. So far, three have been approved. One, it says split, so I'm assuming they may have, it may be one municipality with a pension plan and an OPEB plan where one might, may have been approved, one may have been denied. I'm not sure how that works. I'm just speculating. And then pending is 10. So the municipal stability board meets once a month. So that's why you have 10 pending.
Okay.
Those are waiting for them for their next meeting.
Okay.
So it's hard to say.
There really isn't much of a track record here. This is the first time we've been through that, through something like this. Bless those, Reverend, this is your job, I know, but bless those first 14 communities that made the jump out of the, well over 200 of them. But we're all sort of waiting around to find out what that answer is as well. Is what is, what is the intent here? What are they looking for? We feel we've met the status, we feel we've satisfied whatever, what the Treasury is currently looking for here, which is a 30-year payout plan.
Okay.
So we feel confident about that part of it, but there's not much track record to go on here.
Thank you.
I, I think the biggest part of this is trying to get this out in front of governing bodies so that they pay attention to it, put together a plan, stick to it, and the state will make you accountable. Because there's no requirement to fund a retiree healthcare plan. There is, however, for the pension plans. So, you know, it's, it's more for that type of a situation. I, I feel confident in the financial situation here and in you all that, yes, we're taking this seriously. My first two days on the job was during your budget workshops, and I remember Mayor Turbrec is turning to you all and saying, "We really do need to address this." So I have faith in y'all.
Thank you.
I think that's an important point, and not just the past budget sessions, but this is something that has consistently come up in our budget and work sessions every year. Oftentimes, the goalposts kind of get moved on us from whatever new Gatsby is the cool thing this year for us to react to. But at the end of the day, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, if anybody up here disagrees, feel free. But it is obviously our intention to honor the obligations to folks who have worked here. It has never not been, and I don't think it's ever going to be that way. We can't speak for future councils, but it is a priority. And I understand the way that maybe it looks at this point, and we're going to talk about which option we want to move to, or we want to, we want to enact in just a couple of minutes. But there is some narrative out there that the city has just, you know, ignored all this for years and has, you know, been looking at doing all these other things and hasn't cared about taking care of retirees or their healthcare. And that is patently false, regardless of what people may say and whatever media they choose to say it. We are always concerned about this. It is certainly important for us, and we're going to have a discussion on which way we want to go, strictly on the healthcare side of things. But it's, it's how did we get to this point, too? Again, we saw, we saw the pictures. Certainly Berkeley's not alone. And again, we're probably in the middle of municipalities, and that, that doesn't justify anything or mean it's right. But part of the reason we're in the position we're in right now is the healthcare costs are skyrocketing, and they're probably going to continue skyrocketing. There are reasons, most people, it's very difficult not to find a job that has a pension. And it's even harder to find a job with a pension and healthcare in retirement. It's not something we have any control over, but we have to react, and we have to adapt to the situation. And we've been doing that, and despite the, you know, the state changing, and I don't know how our CAFER was wrong and only had 8% when it's 17%, right, actually where we're at?
Yes.
That's disappointing for a different reason, actually 19% will be in June of this year. But we do take this very seriously. It is something that this council certainly takes care of and makes every, it takes every opportunity to work in additional savings to our OPEB, to our long-term liabilities. So with that as the backdrop, we've just heard Ms. Burke Miller's presentation. We've got four options. We need to have a discussion on these options and ultimately find out what is the best way forward to make sure that we continue honoring our OPEB liability.
Before that, I wanted to just echo on some of those comments. A couple of points I had was, previous council recently, you know, put a large influx of money into the retiree healthcare plan, and if they had not done that, we would be in a much more dire situation. So that is really a game changer in where we could have been and where we are now. And people are concerned, you know, about the pension funding, too. And my understanding is we are going to be talking about that very soon. So perhaps as early as next month in a work session. So, you know, it's not off our radars, you know, the healthcare is today, but, you know, the pension, we're going to be looking about and considering soon.
You're exactly right, and not, not just the fact that it's not off our radar, that it's always been on our radar, despite whatever current conversation is out there. It's, it's not a tail wagging the dog situation. This is something that's been important to us, will continue to be important to us. So with that, if there are any other comments before we start our discussion on which plan we think makes the most sense. Okay, so who has a favorite plan? And why? We saw the recommendation of the staff was Alternative 1, so I guess let's start there. We have Alternative 1, we have our, our little glide chart up there. Alternative 1, I believe, is the third from the right, if we're seeing the colors correctly.
Third, well, third from the left.
Sorry, you're right. More of you guys, yeah. Questions on, or thoughts on Alternative 1? Not necessarily questions, but thoughts? Councilmember Henan?
I am comfortable with 1. A lot of that is, some of the other ones are more aggressive, but don't materially shorten, you know, how quickly we're going to pay things down. You know, we have to, it would be a modest hit to our current budget and with not a really big impact on the tail end. So it's not, I'm one all for wanting to be debt-free and for, you know, getting things paid quickly, but there's also, you know, opportunity cost with money, you know, is that the best use of those funds? It's, with Alternative 1, we aren't paying any more than we were already going to be paying. And in fact, we have that 1.2 million, you know, present dollar cap, you know, so we also get predictability in this plan going forward. Predictability as far as anything with health insurance can be, certainly.
You know, a point you just brought up, for, for those either looking here or at home and maybe can't tell what the difference is, if I'm looking at the picture correctly, we are either going to be fully funded either in 2047 or 2055, regardless of the plan we choose. Am I, am I right on that? 2047, maybe it's 2046? Top line there? Any of the alternatives? I mean, the spread between alternatives, we're talking about 10 years?
Seven.
Seven total?
Yeah, between 2039 and 2056, I think is your, your spread.
I'm sorry, that's 100%. Between?
Yeah, for 100%.
Right, yes, you're correct. Between 2056 and 2039, or 2049. 2049? Yeah, 2049, 2059, that makes more sense. Okay, so we're talking about, about seven to eight years is the difference in when we're, any of these plans, any of these corrective action plans will be 100% funded based on the actuarial data we have here. Councilmember Henan brings up a good point, in the fact that, is that a huge disparity in years for getting us to the same place? And what is the opportunity cost to selecting one of the other plans that get us there a couple of years ahead of that? So what are your thoughts on that?
I have a thought, sorry. So if I look at Alternative 1, continue payments for retiree healthcare, maximum annual payment 1.2 million, and if I look at Alternative 2, it's stating, city pays 1.2 million per year through fiscal year 2043. So that 1.2 is a definite number under Alternative 2, but under Alternative 1, it could be, that would be the maximum, is 1.2 million. So it could feasibly be a different number than 1.2 million? I'm on page 11 of this document that was shown on the screen.
So Alternative 1 is basically pay as you go until we meet the 1.2 million dollars, and then we start drawing on the asset. Whereas Alternative 2 is pay as you go with a little bit extra to get us to that 1.2 million consistently. And then once we hit the 1.2 million, it would just stay at the 1.2. There would be no extra.
Okay, thank you.
And both alternatives were slated to hit that cap in fiscal year 2023. So from that point forward, it would be a 1.2 million dollar cap until we meet, under Alternative 1, until we meet our 40% in 43, and then, or until we meet, same thing, until we meet in 43 as well under both plan alternatives.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gavin? Thank you, Your Honor. I do agree with Councilmember Dean that it seems like we have some really good options here in terms of alternatives. I'm less enamored, I suppose, with Alternative 3. But as Councilmember Henan had, you know, he had indicated, that, you know, previous council did us some favors in making a big contribution that put us in a spot where it could have been a lot worse had that not happened. My thinking is, is that to some degree, we owe that same responsibility to future councils. And so in that vein, like I said, I don't really have any, I don't have any issues with Alternatives 1, 2, or 4, but I would lean towards 4 in being a little bit more aggressive as it sets aside more beyond that, that arc, or that arc, before we get to the kind of the late 20, or late 2020s, early 2030s, when we start to see a bump in those benefit payments. Especially if there's some sort of downturn in the economy, and that's obviously hard to predict, but getting that kind of built up a little bit faster, a little sooner while things are, you know, relatively, going relatively well seems to make a little bit more sense to me. And in the end, it sort of reinforces our commitment to the state as they do their review, certainly within these first two years as they monitor our progress. So that's where I would lean, but again, I'm not, I think Alternatives 1, 2, 1 and 2 are also, you know, well thought out, well planned. I would probably lean towards Alternative 4, though.
Okay. Any other thoughts before, I guess, we go to a straw poll here, because we're going to have to make some progress on these? Yes, you had to? I believe I said during citizens' comments that you may speak on an agenda item while it's being considered?
Charles Terrell from Berkeley, don't run away. Questions are for you. This is a closed plan for the healthcare.
Yes.
Actuarially, when is the end?
2056.
So it is, it is fully funded.
I'm not talking about fully funded. When will it stop? As the employees are aging, they will be passing, and there will be less and less people over time in the program.
Right.
At what point in time is it predicted the program will be done?
It didn't go out that far.
The study we have through is through 2056.
Okay, and, and projection is that we'll still be going strong in 2056?
Benefits payments are?
It's already been 10 years that, that it's been closed. And there's people, I'm sure, right now who are drawing on, on the program. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have retirees who have retired under this benefit.
Okay, so?
So in 2056, the benefit payments are still at half a million.
Okay.
So she didn't carry it out that far till it ended.
So right around the time that we're talking about these being fully 100% funded will be when the, the plan starts closing? If you're saying there's only going to be a half a million dollars in, in draws in 2056? So maybe '26 deal will be done?
Well, it just depends on the lifespan of our employees.
I, I understand, but that's what actuaries do, is they anticipate those things.
Right.
So, I mean, that'd be, that'd be a question I'd have, is when do you anticipate it will be done? You mentioned the trust funds.
Yes.
And you mentioned interest. How, how does MERS? How, how does MERS invest those trust funds? Stocks, bonds, municipal CDs?
They, they are allowed to be much more aggressive with those than they are with, than we are with the taxpayer dollars.
And what is their average rate of return been on the last several years?
The actuarial rate of return is 7.75. Their real market return in the last two years exceeded 12%. So I think it was actually 13...
12.99%.
Yeah, 12.99 and, and something in 13% in the last couple of years. They use an actuarial smoothing rate, which puts it down to about 7.75 as percent rate of return.
How, how, how deep are they smoothing? How many years are they smoothing?
Five.
And it's down to seven?
No, I'm sorry, 10. 10-year, 10-year smoothing period.
Okay. So you anticipate that 5 million to grow? Is that, is that taken into account in these alternatives?
Yes, sir.
So the, the five, the 5 million is anticipated to grow and is part of the 100% funding?
Yes.
Okay.
On this right here, benefit payments and...
Well, you have, you've, you've had, you've had that. I have not seen that, that was not included on the online package.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's online now.
Well...
It is online for anyone to view now.
It's not, it wasn't, that's, that's why I'm asking the questions.
Mm-hmm.
And is there a hurdle rate when things are considered to be underfunded? Is there a certain percentage, and you say, above this percentage, it's not underfunded, below this percentage, it is? And what is that percentage?
So for OPEB, the state is using that 40% as...
So 40% funded?
That's how we, how we will trigger, yes.
Okay. And what about for the pensions? What's the trigger points on those?
For the pensions, um...
60% and more than 10% of governmental revenue.
Over the governmental revenues, yes.
All right, so if it's 60% and we've got one at 50, why is that not triggered?
But it didn't trigger, you have, you have to trigger on both.
Our ARC is eight, what, 8.8%?
Okay, all right, all right. I'm sorry, Matt said or.
Yeah, no.
It's, it's and.
I'm sorry, and, you're correct, and.
It's not or.
So we were, we didn't, we didn't meet the and requirement. It's on one of the slides there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Down at the bottom, primary unit. Down at the bottom on this slide, it says, "Primary unit triggers less than 60% funded and greater than 10%."
ARC.
That's, should be ARC. They've come up with a new acronym as well for ARC, over the governmental fund revenues. So it's got to be both.
Yep, correct. Any other questions or comments from any of the residents here before we go back to identifying our option? Okay. We currently have option one, or alternative one on the table. We have alternative four on the table? Councilmember Gavin, that's one?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean? What is your preferred alternative?
Well, my preferred alternative was two, but I could, I could go with one.
Didn't ask which one you could go with. Apologize, but the only way we're going to make decisions here.
One.
Okay. Councilmember Stedman?
When I first looked at it, I was between two and four. So I'm going to say four.
Yes, you are going to say four. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Blanchard. So I guess that means I am the tiebreaker here, huh?
Well, I have a question, if anyone knows. What, you know, writing down some stats, alternative four versus alternative one is $800,000 more upfront, spread over four years. It gets us from, it cuts three years off the, off of the payment. What I was trying to tally really quickly, that I did not do, how much the total contribution is over all that time? You know, how much savings is for over one, presuming putting some money upfront to invest is going to result in a savings.
Right, if it's funded 100% by 2049 instead of 2052, so three years, 100% fully funded three years earlier with 800,000 upfront, while in those three years that we mentioned, cap at 1.2.
So it is possibly a present dollar savings of 900,000 to fund it further upfront. I'm not super confident on that, but that's potentially the overall savings. So bigger hit upfront, pay more in the long run, accelerate it just a little bit.
Does that change your decision, or yes?
What I'm considering. Okay. And my other question would be, you know, that's 800,000 over four years, how does that impact the rest of our budget, the rest of our budget priorities, the potential to, we haven't looked at, you know, I think we want to consider funding our other pensions as well, pre-funding them a little bit, and this may take away from that opportunity. I'm, I'm inclined still towards one with, with this thought in mind. It does not prevent us from changing our mind within the next year, or even next month, to put that $200,000 in and to accelerate these payments. You know, if we look at all of the retirement benefits holistically and decide, which is for the sake of argument, say we have $200,000 to play around with, does it make more sense here? Does it make more sense in our other pensions? Does it make more sense a little bit in both? Or something else we haven't even discussed? So I'm still inclined to go towards one.
Well, I'm also inclined to go towards one, and I'll, I'll tell you all why. I'm sure you're pins and needles. One thing was already mentioned, the difference in the amount of time that we become fully funded in one versus four is just a few years. With, you know, we've talked about the 800 upfront. I believe I, I believe, I lean towards alternate one because it gives us flexibility. There's nothing in alternate one that says you can't put in extra money.
Right.
You can't do $200,000 if you have it. You can't put in 150,000. I mean, you can do other things. We have the flexibility, and as we've just talked about, with prior councils and this council, this is not something that's not on our radar. We will most assuredly be having this conversation every May, just before Berkeley days, just before we play a softball game, talking about these same things. And alternative one, I think, gives us a flexibility, because there are other things that we need to look at. Pensions are one of those, to figure out where it makes the most sense for us to contribute. Just because alternate one says 100% paid off by 2052, 40% by 2043, that's if we didn't do anything else. We have shown, and if we have the ability, we will do more. Alternative four locks us into doing more, and I just don't think it gives us enough of a, an advantage to do that all upfront. Again, if we have the ability, we'll certainly do that. And we could even do more if we had to, if we wanted to. So I'm leaning towards alternate one to, one, not only make sure we get there and make sure our healthcare is funded, and two, give us the ability to look at everything as a whole when we sit down and do our, our budget hearings next May, and if it's drawing 200 here, or the following year, I should say, we certainly will do that, and we can do that. Questions? Comments? That is a three to two straw poll for alternative one. Anybody have any strong issues with that? If not, I need somebody to put that into, who was the maker of the motion? Let me go back here.
Dean.
Councilmember Dean, was that you?
Yep, I was feeling that coming. Okay. I move to adopt alternate one as our prescribed course of action for the retiree healthcare plan funding.
Councilmember Gavin, okay with you as a secondaire?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments from anybody here? Anybody up, council? And we have a plan. It will be sent over to the state, and go through the different committees and hurdles. Once the plan is officially adopted, we'll make sure that everyone is aware, this is a very important concern for us moving forward. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
And Terbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please call item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 3318, matter of approving the city of Berkeley corrective action plan in compliance with Public Act 202 of 2017.
Is there a motion to approve R 3318?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Henon, I think snuck in there. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is now the subsequent action required to actually pass a resolution, adopt a plan. Now that the city council has officially adopted a funding strategy, those, that information will be inserted into the plan now, and so that we'll have a, a complete document to forward to Treasury for their initial review, and then, again, then, once we receive their initial review back, then we'll be able to forward to the municipal stability board as indicated by the finance director's presentation. So what you'll see, again, a couple of blanks throughout the document included in your packet, but that was in advance of selecting a funding strategy. So that's why it had to be two motions, sir.
Any questions, more comments with this? Seems like it's pretty straightforward after our discussion. No? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 3318?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Terbrack?
Yeah, that was 7718 for the record. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on our agenda?
Motion number M 7818, matter of awarding a contract for senior, contract, I'm sorry, contract for senior home chores, snow removal service to Expert Lawn and Snow, 21083 Mound Road, Warren, Michigan, 48091. $3,500 will be paid from account 275940818040, and the remaining funds will come from 614105818000.
Is there a motion to approve R 3318?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Hold on, we're not on R 3318. What is happening with 7818?
78.
Okay, good, we're good on 7818. I'm sorry, who made that motion?
Um, Henon and Dean.
Councilmember Henon and Councilmember Dean supported it. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of the better services that we provide. It makes, it's a real relief to, to many of our program participants. This is actually the removal of snow, and so each year, we select a new vendor, we go through a bid process, we receive bids in advance, and we open them, we say blind bid, just like we do anything else. This is actually paid for through, I'm sorry, this is, this comes in conjunction with our lawn cutting through CDBG, but there is a cost to the, to the user, to the, for snow removal, and what you have included in your packet is the block grants, the, a memo from your Parks and Rec director, as well as the agreement itself. So those are the items. Again, annual item, we go through, we select a different vendor each year, we have to publicly bid it, and the one to come out on top this year was Expert Lawn and Snow.
Questions or comments on this item?
Yeah.
No, Councilmember Henon?
Yes, thank you. So just wanted to do one clarification. The justification speaks about lawn cutting, and I clarified it is for...
Yeah.
...snow removal.
We run sister, I guess what you call sister programs. This is just the snow removal.
Yeah. And we only got one bid on this, and I am comfortable with the bid, but just as a general question, is there anything we can do to attract more bids?
We, we had the same conversation internally, because we, we put this out on Mitten, which we think is a very good program, but we, we are trying to find out why more lawn and service people aren't also on Mitten. It's a vendor-driven program, so it definitely behooves a vendor to be on there, and we try to contact as many local firms as possible as well to keep as much of this in the city, but so far, it has not, on occasional yield, more than one bid. On this particular time, unfortunately, it did not.
Okay.
But we do, we do try to cast a wide net as possible.
And then, one final question. There is a $3,500 limit that we have, just based on the grant money that we have available. If we have a heavy snowfall this year and we start approaching that, might this come before us again to see if we want to pitch in some more to continue this?
Yes. Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, is there, are you aware of any additional paperwork? Anything else that, that these contractors would have to have to be able to apply for this because it's CDBG funding?
I believe that they have to go through the Davis Bacon process, just to make sure that they're, they're wage reporting properly.
And is that potentially why we're not getting as many?
We found that to be case with some of our concrete contractors. That has been the listed reason for being reluctant to do so. I'm not sure if that extends to the lawn and grass industry, but it's, it's a logical leap.
Yeah, because it's not that individually, this is a difference for them in terms of what this company or companies like that are typically doing, I would imagine. I don't necessarily know what those fees are. Are the fees lower for us, for this program, for senior chore than normal? I mean, there's got to be a reason why we're down to only one bidder, and it's not, nothing against this particular contractor. I know we've worked with them, good references.
Yes.
Happy, happy with them. Just, again, looking forward, because this has been pretty consistent over the last few years, that we have, our bids have consistently dwindled.
Yeah.
In a number of ways, a number of different projects. It's not just CDBG projects either.
True.
So...
We do advertise as a CDBG-funded program, so you're, you're perhaps spot on that this is one of the reasons why we're not seeing as many returns.
Okay. Well, we'll have to solve that problem another time. Today, what we have in front of us is this contract right here. As I have already mentioned, it, heard nothing but good things about this company, great references, recommended by our Parks and Recreation Department as well. Any other questions or comments before we move on Expert Lawn and Snow? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 7818?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Terbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 7918, matter of approving an agreement with McKenna Associates, 235 East Main Street, number 105 Northfield, Michigan, 48167, to provide building department services and code enforcement services. The annual cost to be 75% of the building department revenue, and budget line item to be determined by city administration.
Is there a motion to approve M 7918?
Motion to approve.
Support. Approved by Councilmember Henon, with support by Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you will all recall, council was very clear that improvements were needed for inspection services, both across all aspects, building trades, and especially code enforcement. City staff immediately jumped into locating a vendor for being able to better offer those services. We looked at three different competing vendors, three of the larger names in this particular realm, one that could offer building trades and code enforcement. We discussed, sat down and we got its proposals from and discussed what we were looking for with Carly Wharton, McKenna Associates, and Safebuilt. You'll see in the memo provided by the Community Development Director, the breakouts for each of those costs, included in your packet, included in your place setting, and actually emailed to you earlier today, I apologize for not being in hand sooner, the, the contract itself, which was likewise reviewed by city attorney with some, with some points of clarification on there, as well as the general scope of services for, for what they're looking for. But generally speaking, we're looking at, as, as the clerk indicated, 75% of revenue, flat rate for services. That's all inspection services, no additional cost for plan reviews or code enforcement. The memo indicates estimated totals for each one, and again, we're able to check references and talk to other municipalities who had used McKenna Services. McKenna Services was, was well thought of and recommended by those that they currently have contracts with. We are joined by not only Tim McLean, our, our Community Development Director, but also... We are joined by not only Tim McLean, our Community Development Director, but also John Jackson, good man, the President of McKenna Associates, in order to answer any specific questions you may have on McKenna Services. Mr. McLean?
Specifically for the Building Department, the McKenna team would be able to provide staff to serve as the building official of record, conduct inspections for building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. Plan review would be done as needed. Rental and vacant property inspections would also be included in their scope of services. In terms of staffing, we'd have one dedicated, full-time equivalent building official. The building official would maintain onsite office hours, three to five days a week. That's a practice we've had with our current building official, and something we obviously wanted to continue. So the McKenna team would be able to accommodate that, that need as well. We would have the equivalent of part-time inspectors to do the trades, you know, the mechanical, the plumbing, and the electrical. As for what city residents and contractors can expect, we will continue to offer timely inspections. The McKenna team can complete inspections within 48 hours of scheduling. Timelines for plan review will be consistent with existing practices. Typically, we'll tell contractors, depending on the workload, it's up to 10 days for, for plan review. One of the things that really stood out with the McKenna team was the high emphasis on customer service. So I think that's, that's something that can be expected by residents and, and the contractors. Again, consistent with the current practice, the building official will maintain office hours and will be available to answer questions from residents and contractors. On the code enforcement side of things, there would be one dedicated, full-time code enforcement officer, and this includes Saturdays. One of the things McKenna team will be able to do with code enforcement is maintain a highly visible presence in the community. Some of the additional items that McKenna brings is the ability to implement best practices and assist staff in fully utilizing the capabilities of the BSNA software, that includes documenting and trafficking of code violations. There will be an increase in cost to engage the services of McKenna. It's difficult to put a, you know, concrete number as to, you know, how much cost will increase. You know, the volume of, you know, permits and inspections are the driving force behind revenue for the building department. So a lot of it depends on requests we have for, for permits and inspections. The current relationship with, with our contractors, the trade inspectors are compensated 35% of the, I'm sorry, yeah, 70% of the permit fee, 35 for the rough inspection, and then 35 for the, the final. Currently, the building official is compensated according to a contractually agreed upon building inspection fee schedule. The proposal from McKenna calls for 75% of city revenues for permits, for which the contractor has provided inspections, plan review, and re-inspections, including the fee for performing a business license and residential rental inspections, and inspections associated with the same building permit. With the relatively healthy revenues in the building department, current staffing levels for the clerical staff, building clerk, and licensing clerk would not be affected. A proposed contract with McKenna does not specify a certain number of years. However, it is proposed that the arrangement may be terminated by either party with 30 days' notice, and the city may terminate for cause. However, if it's the wishes of council, we could discuss entering into a certain number of years of a contract, you know, with options to renew. Mr. John Jackson from McKenna is here to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Questions first for Mr. McLean. We've talked about inspections, we've talked about code enforcement. So one, full-time equivalent, which you mentioned, full-time equivalent 40 hours, is that, is that fair, Mr. Jackson? Okay, 40 hours, which is more coverage than we actually have had currently. You hit on something that was going to be, my next question was, how are we documenting and logging all of the infractions? How do we know, how do we know, you know, what's happening as opposed to, you know, being written down in some notebook somewhere? You mentioned the BSNA software, and actually using it as fully as hopefully we can, so that we can see things and track things, and we can get reports on what's going on in a, you know, whether it's quarterly or monthly. Quarterly is probably okay. A presence in the community, seeing somebody would probably help as well. I certainly see those as benefits moving forward. We've talked ad nauseam about increasing our efficiency as it relates specifically to enforcement, code enforcement and inspections. Mr. Jackson, would you like to come up? Certainly appreciate you being here tonight to field any questions and kind of fill us in a little bit more on, I guess, what we can expect in, in the relationship, should we decide to move forward tonight.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come here. It's been a pleasure sitting down with Matt and Tim, figuring out, you know, what exactly the city's expectations are. And I think that's one of our approaches, and what's made us successful is we try to figure out what the expectations of the community are. And we heard that one of the priorities, for sure, is that, you know, the city cares, and our philosophy is going to be an extension of that. So we want to be out there, working with the public, making sure that, you know, the smallest permit feels as important as the largest permit, that we give everybody attention. And that goes for code enforcement also. When we're out there in the field, talking to residents, talking to citizens about, you know, what they can do to improve their property and be part of the overall pride in the community, you know, that's definitely a priority for us as well. We've been doing this now for probably 12 years. We've got a number of local communities that we work with. And, you know, they're all unique. They all have their own different cultures. So we have to adjust when we go into a community. We don't bring with us an approach necessarily, other than, like I said, a stress customer service. So, you know, that's really the way we approach it. With respect to accountability, that's another thing that we stress. In a lot of communities, we provide monthly reports, not only on the volume of activity, but also progress on initiatives. You know, where are we in terms of getting BSNA up to, up to snuff? What are the obstacles? What have we run into that's, that may be preventing us to make progress? And when have we made achievements? So we try to report that out to the administration, to keep them abreast of, you know, the progress that we're making.
Well, I can tell you that customer service and enforcing codes are two things that we have been not as good as we should be. Not, not delivering as high a quality and experience in a service for, for anybody. I don't care whether you're a contractor, resident, all of it. I don't think we've been doing that. One thing I also wanted to ask about was, as it relates to inspections on new builds, for example, aside from whatever tracking software you have, is there any, you know, anything that you like to see up at sites so that people know what's going on, see that the permits are posted? Is there, are there any?
Well, there, there are standard operating procedures out on the sites, and our building official obviously would follow those. But we, we're finding that a lot of communities want just-in-time results. And we've talked a little bit about that in terms of a target, so that when we go out and do an inspection, we have our tablets, you know, our inspectors have their tablets. They enter the results in their tablet, and then it can be reported back to the main office instantly, as soon as they're done with that. And emails can start to be sent out to the contractors and let them know that this inspection has been done, and here's the result.
Okay.
So, you know, kind of expediting the turnaround time between the inspection and communicating the result is something that we've, that we've seen work well.
Questions from other folks besides me? Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions. This might be a question for Mr. McLean or Mr. Jackson. Will the folks doing the code enforcement and the building official, will they be sworn in and able to write tickets?
Yes, the, the person that's going to be writing tickets will have to be, you know, officially sworn in.
When someone, it sounds like we're going to have a, maybe a regular building official that, you know, when they are one of our normal inspectors and the code enforcement persons on vacation, you have people that can fill in those gaps while they're away.
Yep.
And this is just a comment. If you, if your guys see something in the city that's not working, please escalate it. We've had a problem where decisions have just been made unilaterally. I'd rather it go through the proper channels, and we, you know, find ways, you know, if something's not working, let's find ways to, you know, solve it and make things work better, more efficiently. On code enforcement, how will they take complaints if someone, you know, has an issue that they need to, you know, bring to our attention?
Well, I, I think the first thing would be to look at the system that the city currently has in place in terms of documenting complaints. And we would keep track of those, you know, like we do in other communities. But then also, if we have a code enforcement person here for five days a week, including Saturdays, what we find to be successful is to be more proactive and go out and, you know, survey the community. They would typically, you know, divide the community into five different areas, or, you know, depending on how long it takes them to survey, survey the community, maybe two different ones, they do it multiple times a week. But they would have a route that they go on, they'd switch it up and do that sort of thing. But they'd have a regular way to go out there and look for things that are a priority.
Excellent, excellent. When someone makes a complaint, how long would you expect for them to hear back and, you know, for, you know, some action to be taken?
You know, I, I would say 24 hours would be reasonable. You know, I think if someone raises a complaint, goes to the top of the list. Obviously, we're going to maintain a list, and, you know, I don't know how long the list is going to be. It's kind of hard to judge until we get into it. But, you know, I, I think the sooner we can communicate with the person who lodges the complaint, the more they're going to feel heard. We may not necessarily have a solution right off the bat. We may just lay out a game plan. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to talk to them. We're going to lay out their options, and then, you know, that kind of thing.
This, that just triggered something on my mind. Are people, I have had people say, I, this neighbor is doing something that I know is illegal and is really bothering me, but I do not want to complain for fear of retaliation from them. Will people be able to make anonymous complaints?
And again, I would refer to the city in terms of their current policy, but I think they could make an anonymous complaint.
We do allow that now?
Okay, great. And then, just the last thing. When the code enforcement isn't available and public safety is, will there be some coordination with public safety to make sure things don't fall through the cracks?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, we're going to have to have a system in place, and the system is going to have like a checklist of the high priority code violation issues that we're out there looking for, and then also tracking them. So if there's follow-up that needs to be done by public safety, they can do that based on what's in the, recorded in the system.
Excellent. I'm very pleased with everything I've heard, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dean?
So just following up on the latest comment regarding follow-up. Is there a system in place for, like Councilmember Henon was saying, if, you know, the police have to follow up on something? I guess who oversees all of that? Is that you as a company then?
So, so it's all going to be in the BSNA system, and we're going to work with the administrative staff, the, you know, the permit technicians, to be able to run reports.
Okay.
So that they can run reports for whoever's doing the code enforcement to see, you know, what's pending, when the, when the violation was issued, what corrective measures have been, you know, discussed or, or pending, so that whoever gets that list, that report for that day of code enforcement, they'll know what's going on.
Okay. I do have another question. And this probably is to Mr. McLean. Could you just talk a little bit about what our current system is for, you know, if, if a resident wants to make a complaint? How does, how does that process begin, and then what is the process?
Well, it can come in a number of ways. We get a lot of phone calls that'll go directly to code enforcement. Some of them, some of the phone calls will come to me. They're able to generate them through email. There's the, the other system, the revise, that I, I don't know if that's worked as well as, as we intended it to. Once, once a complaint is made, the officer on duty, you know, goes out, checks it out. What's supposed to happen is that everything gets documented in BSNA. And it allows, say, if a violation notice is issued, there's a, you know, timeframe for correction. And you can put a date in there for follow-up that kind of, it's a reminder, you know.
So then that would trigger
Correct.
like a little reminder to follow up on this. There's a certain timeframe that
Yes.
Okay.
Our process is previously relied too heavily on the memory of the enforcement officer. Whereas, one of the first things McKenna said when, when we sat down and talked to them is, training and implementing best practices with, on the system we currently have, is going to be an initial must. In fact, Stan and I are going to be meeting with BSNA representatives to talk about training opportunities at the end of this week, I think the 25th. But again, our, our old system, we'll, we'll talk about in the past tense. But one of the things that McKenna's going to come in with is a brand-new way of, of logging things. So everything goes into BSNA as soon as it's reported, and then it's followed up with and made a determination what next steps are. But at the very least, it needs to go in the system
Sure.
with a reminder put up.
So then, is McKenna then communicating with Mr. McLean? Like, I guess I'm just interested in the oversight, and then the, you know, how, how this is going to be?
So we're going to have a building official here, you know,
Yes.
the bulk of the time, and they'll work closely with the other department heads.
Okay.
They'll participate in weekly meetings and things like that. So it comes from you guys.
Got it.
It doesn't come from McKenna, it comes from the city.
Okay.
Like I said, it's an extension of your policies, your values, and that sort of thing. So we're not going to go out there and, you know, start implementing our own.
No, and I wasn't understanding it to be the case, but I just am, I like when there's, you know, the communicate, I know how the communication's flowing
Yep.
within the city, and then to, to, you know, go beyond so that people understand and know that it's happening, and it's being followed up on and all of that.
Absolutely. You know, that communication is essential when, you know, projects go through the site plan review process, the zoning process, which we won't be directly involved with. And then it gets to us. We need to know what has happened leading up to that. So there's a lot of communication that needs to happen. I think that's why it's important that we have someone on site
Yes.
that can participate in these meetings and be available, you know, as needed.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm also looking forward to having the monthly reporting on cases opened, cases closed, measurable timeframes in between, to know what our average time span is, so.
There's a check and a balance now.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick questions. First off, thanks for being here. The first one is, the individuals dedicated in these specific spots, will they always be the same individual? Or is there going to be rotating out?
We, we want to keep the same team together. You know, we have substitutes if necessary. You know, sometimes people move on, they make different career choices. We just had one of our best code enforcement guys go to work, he got a job as a fire chief. Hard to compete with that. So, you know, it, it happens. But that's why we have a deep, a deep bench, and we can bring people in to replace it. But we'd like to have the, the dynamics and the chemistry of a single team that knows each other and can talk to each other.
Great. Okay. And then, the second one, it's already been mentioned quite a bit already with BSNA, but can you build that out a little bit and talk about, like, right now, I can go to BSNA online, search through a municipality and see what sort of code violation has been, has occurred on a certain property, when it was closed, how much money it was, if there was, if it was taken at all, and just a whole host of information that, as a member of the public, I can access, and it's kind of a good public interface. I mean, how are you going to build that out to make sure that we can have something like that, so that we can have residents that see this kind of stuff?
So in order for BSNA to work to its full capacity, we have to start with a clear set of procedures and, and expectations. So that includes checklists and reports, the way we want them to be generated. You know, what information do we want? So we have to set that up before the meeting with BSNA. And then, once we get that all set up, then we can, you know, download those, I think it's I think it's called projects. I think that's the name of it. And you can set up a project for each different type of activity, whether it's a code enforcement issue, a building permit, a plan review, inspection, whatever it is. And so that information will be available in the system for any number of reporting options. Our monthly reports that I mentioned, online reporting is also an option. So I think, you know, the cliche is input equals output, right? So I think the important thing is sitting down with the staff and figuring out what we want to get out of this.
Great, thank you very much, thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? No? I do have another question, actually. Oh, Chuck, sure, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. Charles Terrell from Berkeley. Again, owing to getting the posting very late, I didn't give it the, it's due in terms of reviewing the document. Matt, you had mentioned talking to three different companies. In the formal document, it says, based on our recent discussions, was there a statement of work developed and circulated? Or was all of this, all those, how was, what was the genesis? How did this get started, the discussions with the three companies?
We specifically reached out to three companies based on recommendations from other municipalities.
Was there a statement of work developed?
No, we verbalized the city's expectations to each of the companies.
Okay. I didn't get into liabilities at all, I looked at indemnifications. Got a real problem with that in there, Mr. Stern.
Do I?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, the indemnification section should be, should be Xed out.
That's going to be part of our discussion.
Like I said, I haven't gotten to liabilities or some of the others. I, owing to getting it very, very late.
There are some terms and provisions in the contract that need further discussion. And my recommendation to council tonight is if they want to move ahead, that they authorize engaging the contract subject to finalization of the contract terms and a condition and a form acceptable to the city manager and the city attorney. So we'll work through some of those bumps.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Last question I had, Mr. Jackson, one second, Tammy. So you mentioned we'd have a team, primarily a team who is here. What if we get into a situation where, for whatever reason, one of those members is not up to our standard or something's happening? Is there room to switch people, bring somebody else in? I mean, how is that handled?
Yeah, and that happens. You know, sometimes a person's not a good fit for whatever reason. And we have the, again, the luxury of having a deep enough roster that we can bring others out there to, for the community to meet and see if they feel like it'd be a good fit.
Okay, thank you. Tammy, sorry.
I was just wondering, how many employees are going to lose their job? No, because you guys are contracting this out. We used to have a city person. Now you're contracting it out. How many city employees are going to lose their job?
This will replace five contractual, independent contractors and then one part-time individual.
Any additional questions? Nope, we do.
Hi, Patty Curtis, I live in Berkeley. Are the McKenna inspectors compensated per hour or per inspection? I mean, within our contract? Are they just here for a certain number of hours provided and they get, McKenna takes care of the specifics? There's no incentive for them to ask for additional inspections? They're not paid per inspection by the city?
No, the agreement is for 75% of building department revenues. There's no hourly rates or anything like that included for inspections.
So, are we still in a situation where revenue could be generated by McKenna employees, for McKenna, by increasing the number of inspections they do on each property? Like we had with our current inspector? That's what I'm trying to avoid here.
No, no, it's flat rate, well, flat percentage.
A flat percentage? Okay. Can we set a term for review of this contract rather than having it unexpiring? That's just my personal request. With regard to BSNA training, that will include the office staff? That's where a lot of our mucked up process has been, in that, you know, things get typed up on a typewriter and all that. Will the office staff be trained to make entries as well and update by the minute? I mean, or let me precede that.
The answer is yes.
Okay, the question is, will McKenna be connected to BSNA that can be accessed in the office on the road with their pads?
That's the objective, yeah.
Okay, awesome. And... All right, are the code enforcement people that we're hiring actually a separate individual from the building inspectors? Like, we'll have one full-time code enforcement person working five days, however many hours you negotiate? Okay. Oh, does our city code mandate times from violation number to a ticket? Violation date of notice to ticket time? Or can that be done via our city code at the officer's discretion? I know what the best practice is, I'm asking you if that's prohibited.
The code does not specify a time. It is left to discretion and judgment of the enforcement.
I mean, like, you can write a violation notice and say, if you don't have this fixed by tomorrow, you'll get a ticket.
Correct.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Yeah, for staff and McKenna, I wanted to suggest monthly or quarterly updates for the community, just to see what progress is being made. You know, not a list of offenders, but, you know, aggregate statistics, that sort of thing. And I was going to recommend for us that we look at reviewing this because it's a new contract in one year, to see how it's going and if there's any changes we need to make and, you know, or if we're happy and we'll continue.
Questions, comments, attorney, any issues with something like that? Is that commonplace, not common?
It can be done, as I mentioned. You know, I have several comments and one of them was just throwing out the ideas. Will council be, will the city be satisfied with just having the ongoing relationship with no date certain as far as when the contract expires? I mean, you can have it that way if you want. Or particularly at the onset, do you want to have some type of look back or term certain? Keeping in mind, you can always extend it, but that's entirely council's call. We can do it however you want to do it.
I don't think council wants this to just be in perpetuity. We've seen that situation in some other places that we're trying to remedy right now. So I do think there should always be a sunset at some point, whether it's one year and then options after that, I think is something we need to discuss.
Yeah, and I think one year would be my recommended term just initially. I think we would, if things are working out, then we look at longer terms, you know, so it's not, you know, because this could be a big process, but we definitely do look, you know, every few years.
I was just going to comment, as written, there is no expiration date, but there is a provision in there that it is terminable at will at any time. So that provision would remain. I mean, if you want to have a term certain built in, certainly that's something that can be negotiated and agreed upon. But just keep in mind the other part of it, that it is terminable at will. So if at any time either party becomes dissatisfied with the arrangement, you're only 30 days removed, I think it's 30 days, what was spelled out, 30 days removed from being able to, and certainly if there were just cause, I mean, if there was a problem that serious, that there was cause involved, it's terminable immediately.
Okay, I mean, so if it's, if we could terminate it at any time, I would think we can certainly do our own research after a year and see if it's something we want to continue or not. So my initial thought, again, approving this, if we do approve it conditionally based on what you've mentioned before, we've got some things in the contract still that need to be worked out. I would personally be comfortable with a three-year period with some options, maybe to renew after that. But at least look at three, we're going to have a conversation about what's happened, knowing that at any time, we can pull the plug if it's not working, if we're having issues. Is that?
I agree with that.
I'd be comfortable with three in the contract and this initial year, review it, you know.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, we appreciate you being here tonight to answer these questions. Again, if you haven't been able to figure out by the tenor of our conversation and the concerns of our residents, this is something that we really want to see done differently. And we're excited for the opportunity to use the technology available to us. It's probably been available to us for a few years, a little more efficiently now, and just enforce our codes and inspect our buildings. I mean, that's kind of what we're looking for.
We're looking forward to it, thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-8018, a matter of approving the appointment of Stephen J. Allen as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term expiring on July 1st, 2020. He will be replacing Mike Kirby.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
As mentioned, Mike Kirby has stepped down from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The recommendation is that our most senior alternate be appointed to fill that position, Mr. Stephen Allen. The term vacated by Mr. Kirby will be, will run through July 1st of the year 2020. And so at that point, Mr. Allen would need to be reappointed.
Yes, Mr. Allen, as you mentioned, has currently been serving as an alternate. He has been serving very ably, from what I understand, and members of the zoning board are impressed with his knowledge and his ability to look at the situation and study. So as far as I'm concerned, that's a ringing endorsement. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-8018?
Stedman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. I believe that brings us to communications. Do I have to follow the order there? Can I go out of order?
You can go out of order.
Just want to work around here since Eileen's all the way over there. By herself, I figured I would just start there and work our way around. You're up.
Oh, you're starting with me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I haven't even thought about it yet. I have no idea how the library book sale went this weekend, but it's over now. It was Thursday, Friday and Saturday. I hope they made a lot of money for the friends and so on. Beautification committee, I reported on last meeting and we don't meet again until the 7th of November, right, the day after the election. And the beautification committee is going to be working with the city in terms of fixing the bus stop damage that was done to the bus stop up on Woodward. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
October 25th, Thursday, is Tail on the Trail at J.C. Park. Start times begin at 6:00 PM and go in 10-minute increments. Please dress up and bring a bag for your candy. October 29th is the Berkeley Boo Fest in collaboration with Parks and Rec and the Berkeley Junior Women's Club. There's a 5:00 PM start time there and those, excuse me, those start times are staggered as well. And then, November 6th, there's a Vacation Camp Day. 8:45 AM until 5:00 PM. The field trip is to Little Caesars Arena and Arts and Scraps. And you can register for these by calling Parks and Rec or via the website.
Good, all right, thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Right. This Thursday, October 25th, at 6:30 PM is the Environmental Advisory Committee. The Tree Board met on October 8th. They're working on planting instructions for the 117 new trees that are going to be planted in the next month or so. And they're also starting to look forward to how they can participate in our master planning process. Their next meeting is Tuesday, November 13th, at 7:00 PM at the library. And then, I have my next talk with Dennis one week from now, on October 29th. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the library. You can drop in anytime during that period of time with any questions or concerns you have. Thank you.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I keep it nice and short, given that since the last meeting, there haven't been any meetings that I'm liaison to. So Planning Commission meets tomorrow at 7:30 and then the Zoning Board of Appeals will be meeting on November 13th.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Still wearing pink all month of October to raise money and awareness for the fight against breast cancer. So thank you for everyone who's been kind enough to donate to the American Cancer Society throughout this month. And thank you for everyone else I see out there wearing pink. Not only our city clerk jumping into the spirit of things, but as I'm out and about, you see, you see a lot of awareness on this topic, so I'm grateful for it. I don't think there's very many of us in this room, we're probably watching at home, that hasn't been touched by this terrible fiction in some way. So the more we can do to end stories like that, the better. And the more we can do to have more birthdays, as ACS is fond of saying, the better. I'd like to thank everybody who came to our last town hall meeting on the November ballot topics. Would want to reinforce, though, that we continue to answer any questions anyone may have, whether it be on things like finances, as we discussed this evening, or really any topic at all. If there are some questions out there, if there's some lingering thing you're kind of scratching your head about or if you see something put out into the world that maybe is a bit of a head-scratcher or doesn't quite seem right, please feel free to reach out to members of staff, whether, or my office, or really anybody. We'd love to try to answer any questions you have. As we've been repeatedly saying, our goal is to have the most informed voters in the ballot box on November 6th and filling out their absentees in the days leading up to it as possible. So again, it's our Berkeley, it's our vote and we look forward to really having this day come, the voices be heard and, you know, having it, having some direction there. So, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, have anything for us today?
Yes, I'm going to make up for Blanchard and Baker, so here we go. The last day to register to vote was October, Tuesday, October 9th. So if anybody did not make, did not register on time or have questions, please contact the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. We can confirm and also direct you into whether you need to go back to your prior municipality or not. Saturday, November 3rd, the city clerk's office will be open for election business only from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That is also the last day for registered voters to receive absent voter ballots through regular, to be sent to them through regular mail. Electors qualified to obtain an absentee ballot can also come in on Monday, a Monday before the election, which is November 5th, by 4:00 PM, but you do have to vote here at the city hall. As mentioned before, Tuesday, November 6th, is the general election. Polls are open at 7:00 AM and they will be closed by 8:00 PM. Absent voter ballots are due by 8:00 PM. The polling locations is Precinct 1 is here in the council chambers in the city hall. Precinct 2 is at Rogers Elementary School. Precinct 3 is at Berkeley High School in the east gym. Precinct 4 is at the community center. Precinct 5 is at Angel School. Precinct 6 is at Patton Gill and Precinct 7 is also at the Berkeley High School East Gym. All the polling locations will be in the gym for the general election. The clerk's office is still accepting applications for election workers. If you have any questions as to where you are, where you need, where you are voting, feel free to contact us. Again, our number is 248-658-3310. Again, our number is 248-658-3310. If you need a vote, a new voter ID card, please don't hesitate to give us a call. Applications for the absentee ballots is available on the city website and also on the Secretary of State of Michigan website. Voting booths are up here, are set up here at the city hall. If those that have come in for an absentee ballot would like to vote here, they're welcome to do so also. I'd like to thank our, all of our precinct election workers, our absentee voter counting board election workers, and our deputy clerk, Gina Cipriani, for the outstanding work they do for us for each election. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, I was hoping for some developments in the marijuana game.
And that stole all my thunder, but.
I too will be relatively brief as we have more work to be done tonight, but I do want to congratulate library director Matt Church, former library director Celia Morrison, everybody else who has been involved with the Berkeley Public Library over the last 90 years, as it celebrated its birthday on October 11th, also the same day that we had the community engagement event that the city manager mentioned. It was a tremendous event, very well attended. Many local elected officials, not just from people up here, were, were there in attendance. Great opportunity, had tons of things for the kids, memories, they worked with the historical community to get some artifacts, I guess, library artifacts, but it was, it was really just, just an absolutely wonderful night, and everybody had a great time, and our library does tremendous things in this community despite the fact that, you know, people are going digital, thinking that the library's not going to be around, and I can tell you, that is absolutely not the case for our library. There's so much that our library has to offer, and Matt and his staff do an absolutely wonderful job continuing to make sure that our library is on the cutting edge to provide our residents with whatever services they need when it comes to media. So, congratulations to him. Yeah, so we will not be meeting again before the election, which is why Ms. Boucher got an opportunity to say a lot of things today. You know, I talked a couple of weeks ago about the tenor of the communication, especially as it relates to the bond issues in Berkeley, the bond and the millage. It seems to be much more directed towards the bond, though, in terms of being a very polarizing topic. My plea last time was to respectfully engage in discourse, pro or con, there is not necessarily a right or wrong answer, we can all have opinions, you can express your opinion, but other people have the right to express their opinion as well, and, I mean, at the end of the day, in the land of Facebook, it doesn't matter. People are going to say what they're going to say, which I have seen over the last two days. It's, it's very disheartening, but there's a light at the end of the tunnel. The election's coming, soon. Our democratic process is rooted in the ability of individuals to have a say in government, but really specifically, directly in local government. That's, Election Day is that ability. So, come to the polls, exercise your civic duty, your, your right to vote, have a say what happens in the city of Berkeley in the future. It is your Berkeley and it truly is your vote. And it is my hope that after the election, we will not go, we will kind of retreat from our, you're either A or B, you're either with us or against us mentality that seems to have pushed its way through the city on either side, it doesn't matter what side you're on of the issue, that seems to be what happens nowadays. So, it is my sincere hope that after the election, we can unite, because regardless of how the vote turns out, we're moving forward as a community, whether it's a yes on either of, whether it's no, it, it doesn't matter. We have to work with what we have and we have to be able to move forward, and I don't need factions saying, oh, I was against this thing now, so now I'm going to come up with my own idea, we're going to push this or that. If your plan is to push alternatives before we've even had a chance to really see what the residents have to say, I don't know, it's just, I don't like to do that. I like to allow the residents to tell us what they want, and then we can operate from there, certainly. So, I look forward to a great turnout. I expected turnout that was even better than we had in the primaries, and although the clerk, I don't know, we, we shouldn't have to be making any photocopies, we're 100%, we'll be ready to go.
Yes.
No worries.
No worries.
We will have ballots for everybody, I can promise you that. That has been taken care of, so I look forward to seeing everybody and we'll see what happens in November. With that, is there a motion? Oh, nope, you need to call, call it first?
We still have one more agenda.
Yeah, she, I know, I was going to make it adjourn to go into closed session, not to adjourn to forever.
We haven't, we haven't voted to go into closed session yet.
Right, I was going to ask for that motion to do that.
Right.
Do you need to read it, or can I just ask for a motion?
We need to read it.
Okay, go ahead.
Closed session, matter of considering whether to meet in closed session after conclusion of the regular meeting to discuss attorney-client privilege communication.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
By Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Dean. Do I have to vote on that, or can we just adjourn to the closed session?
Need to vote.
Ms. Boucher, please call the roll.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. We will not be handling any business after the closed session, there will be nothing to vote on, so if you have somewhere else that you would rather be at 8:55 for the rest of the evening, please feel free, we will be very shortly when we come back.